Mrs. Cackill?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mrs. Intihar?
Here.
Mr. Johnson is absent. Mr. Knicker?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson? Here. And Dr. Harris, can you lead us in a break?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I do need a motion to suspend the rules and move into committee of the whole.
So moved.
Meant by Dr. Roman and seconded by Ken and Mrs. Sander. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Knicker?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson? Yes, we are now in workshop session and we have two items, curriculum and finances. So I will hand it over to you and let you lead us around.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson, good evening, board members. And as you mentioned this evening, we are, I've got two very important topics this evening. I would say our core business, curriculum and finance, work at the board, statutory responsibilities of the board, is to establish curriculum and approve a budget every year. So we've got very important information here this evening. And the first topic is a curriculum update. We have a lot of work going on across the district when it comes to Common Core, specifically math and English, language arts, reading. And I'm going to turn it over to Faith at this time, and she's going to give an update of where we're at, where we're headed, and certainly open for any questions at that point. Good stuff going on, a lot of work. Faith?
Great, well, I'm going to talk a lot about curriculum and instruction tonight. There's, as Dr. Harris already said, we have an immense amount of things that are going on. And a lot of that is due to all of the new nationwide Common Core standards. Forty-six states have adopted them, Illinois was one of them, and District 200, like all of the districts in the state of Illinois, are getting with the new program and adopting these new state standards. So the big work, the big project is up there, math Common Core. And last year when I talked to you, we seemed like it was a year, you know, and a half away. Now it's getting ever so close because in the fall, all of our math teachers across the district will be implementing these new standards. Then the fall after that, we will be implementing English and language arts. And that not only affects all of the teachers that teach language arts and reading, but there are content standards for all those people who teach science and social studies and how they're going to help out with communication process of reading and writing and speaking. But it's not just those classes. As you know, we've been creating middle school electives, doing all kinds of things to make sure that even in our other classes, we're achieving college and career readiness and working on those keys to success. So I'm going to go through and highlight a few of those. This chart, and it's, I don't expect you to read it on the screen, it's also larger in your packet, but I put that up just because these are the things that we had put for before. You've seen this chart, and I want to just say that we're marching right along in those timelines, except we've added a few things. You look where we were in 2011, 12, and there's a lot more that we did for math than what we were planning for language arts. Then 2012, 2013, I added instructional technology and those things that we need to put in place to, for our students and also for our staff. And I highlight a few of those, I'll get into more detail, but the things that we've added in 2012, 2013 with Common Core, language arts, we finished the grade three through five reading framework. We did K through two before and had worked on that. And then we went and visited all of the middle school language arts classrooms in the district and interviewed quite a few students and decided we needed to have a six through eight reading framework as well. And that is in the works, so that is going to be added under there when we're looking at 2012, 2013 and things that we need to sustain later on in 213, 14, and beyond. So now I'm going to get into some of the details. Want to give you a lot of updates on Common Core math. We now have new standards, and you approved them for last board meeting, that's grades, for grades kindergarten through seventh, as well as the algebra standards. And they are verbatim Common Core, except we upped the ante a little bit at grades five, six, and seven and adopted some of the standards from seventh grade into the sixth grade classes and sixth grade into fifth grade, so that there were no holes when our students reached algebra. So it's a little bit different and unique to District 200. Then we really felt it was important to create common vocabulary lists so that there was continuity as a student went through kindergarten, first, second, third, that certain math terms had been mastered and we could reflect in those would be used and reviewed, but not taught from brand-new. And those have all been done, and soon, in February, everybody's going to get the same math vocabulary cards and they're going to start using them now. Because as we get ready to do that into the fall, the more work we can do on math vocabulary now, the more ready our students and our staff will be. Just to give you a kind of a quick example, kindergarten teachers shouldn't be saying, "Well, four plus two is," no, the sum of four and two. And if we get used to using correct terminology, that will pay off as the students progress through the grades. Also, big news, we piloted at the elementary level, a new math textbook series. We went through and piloted two. There were 21 different classrooms that piloted those materials, used them with students, have feedback from some of the parents, and those were with the new Common Core standards that they did that with. And then we just had a huge meeting, we took all of that data, brought in all of that, and I'm pleased to say that every single grade level came to the same consensus on one math series, District Y.
That's a change.
And we will be presenting that information at the next board meeting for your approval so that we can officially start working on all of the pacing guides and ordering those materials and the trainings that go along with that. That was huge to be able to say that and get that done, but now we'll have one elementary math series. I know that Mr. Farley will be pleased because we reviewed the middle school math materials and found those to be satisfactory. They'll get the job done with Common Core with just a little bit of tweaking and some supplemental materials so we're not spending a lot of money on middle school math materials. Also, in Common Core, and you know, I live this, but I don't expect you all to remember, that there are eight mathematical practices that are key from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, on things like learning perseverance and ability to solve a problem, how to model a mathematics problem. And we've started that training by taking one mathematical practice a month and pushing it out to the entire staff and then having them share with each other how they're doing that. We started it last year, we're taking one a month, so it'll be done by April. Also, we brought in some experts, Angela Andrews and a few other people, to talk with our math committee members over the summer so that they had their perspective and their understanding as we wrote the pacing guides and talked about what training and needs we needed to have. What's coming up next for Common Core math? We have a lot of training that needs to happen. The new Common Core standards really require teachers to think about math and how we teach it differently. There's a lot more of teaching conceptually instead of just algorithms, a lot more of application, a lot more of number sense. And we need to provide that training and those experiences to our staff. So on the upcoming institute day on February 15th, we will be taking a half-day of training by grade level for all teachers pre-K, actually isn't going to be involved too, all the way through eighth grade. And we're utilizing district staff to do it. We have so many people who've been through the master's program in math and have expertise that we've pooled those resources. And principals and two teachers will be taking a grade level, talking about common math vocabulary things, but then although, also modeling and giving students and teachers lessons that are here just for their grade level. Because you can imagine second-grade teachers don't want to listen to sixth-grade teacher's version of math. Then in March 1st is another, usually countywide is an option, we decided at the elementary level not to send our teachers out for that. Instead, we're building in-service in-house because there's so much that we need to do. We do not want to have the whole buffet of options, we wanted to get math done. Middle school math teachers also then said, "Faith, that's what we need to do too." So the middle school math teachers are going to stay behind and we're going to spend an entire day on what is good math instruction and also on the pacing guides. Then in April, as we have new report cards and we have to grade math differently, every single elementary math teacher will have a half-day with me on what those new report cards look like so that we have common understandings of what that grade is going to look like next year. Then by May, we anticipate having the new materials, and it's important to me that we get those things in teachers' hands before summer hits so that they have enough time when they have a little leisure time to look through those materials and be as prepared as they can for the fall. And then we have new assessments, because our district local assessments are aligned to our old standards, we will be rewriting those and having those ready also by the fall. All right, that was math in an nutshell. English, language arts? Various, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll bite.
Yes.
How to grade math?
Sure. We're going toward a standard-based report card, so we're wanting and will be having list of standards for kindergarten, list of standards for first grade, and reporting those out to parents. So instead of it being just, "You got an A in math," it will be what your letter grade was at the upper grades, A, B, C, F, but it'll also be, "Can you solve an equation with two variables? Can you do two-digit by two-digit multiplication in this amount of accuracy?" So there'll be a lot more detail shared with parents about what skills they actually have. And that is going to require a lot more alignment and a lot more conversation for our staff to be ready to do that.
Faith?
Yes?
Have you received any feedback from the buildings on anxiety the teachers may have with implementing the Common Core, particularly with math, and particularly at the elementary level?
Yes.
Is this the response to that anxiety?
Well, we had a lot of this built before the anxiety, well, and we knew that some of the anxiety was going to be there. The anxiety is getting a little higher the closer August comes. Because of the really difficult math concepts, especially now at fourth and fifth grade, that certainly, and my major was math, and I taught elementary school, those were not the things that I was taught how to teach. So unless our staff, and many of them did go back and do extra work in math, but for the most part, elementary teachers focus in on reading. So we need to provide a lot of that professional development, and yes, principals and teachers have shared some of that concern. One of the things that we'll be doing once we do implement in the fall, there's a lot of feedback to me that they would like to have grade level meetings orchestrated from me so that we all get together and say, "Well, how did the first three weeks go?" With all the fourth-grade teachers. And I think that we'll have a lot of people show up just because they want to be there, not because it's part of the contract or, "What are my hours paid up?" I've been really impressed with the staff that they're wanting that opportunity to share. We're also looking at ways to utilize technology, like electronic binders, so if someone comes up with a really great lesson plan and they want to share how well that went, they can put that, and then it doesn't just benefit the three fourth-grade teachers at Emerson, all the fourth-grade teachers across the district could see it. But that anxiety and that need for professional development is very, very real, and we still need to continue to measure that and help support that.
You know, I just want to follow up on that, you know, both Mr. Roman and Mr. Gambiani's comments, you know, Faith touched on it, elementary teachers clearly have a strength, most generally, in reading and language arts. I mean, that typically is their strength there. Not all. It is rare to have a elementary teacher that has a strong, you know, professional background in math. It doesn't mean they can't teach it, it just means that's not their, that wasn't concentration areas. So it's certainly at the K-5 level, math is always, you know, an issue that we do a lot of professional development around. And you can have the greatest curriculum in the world, but it's all about the instruction too. It's about what happens in the classroom, the teachers can, you know, be prepared and confident enough to be able to make adjustments, especially if kids aren't able to grasp things first time around and how to go back and reteach and target and make sure that kids are confident in a particular skill. So I think that is something, you know, middle school too, but at middle school level it's much different because most of the teachers teach middle school, have that concentration area, have the math background, have, are qualified and certified in math. So it's much different. And then obviously, the high school level is completely different. So, you know, elementaries where math, change in math and expectations for assessment as well as curriculum change is big, it's even more significant than I believe, and certainly than language arts in the meeting, where many of our teachers are much more confident at the K-5 level.
As a follow-up to that, and I may have asked this question last time we discussed this, but as a follow-up to that, are we expecting, since this curriculum will be adopted in 46 states, are we expecting that colleges and universities who are turning out teachers are going to be teaching them differently how to teach math? And when can we expect that that would be evident?
Yes, that is the hope, but I think they're living behind in being able to do that. However, I've had two requests in the last two weeks to come to a college to talk to their new classes about Common Core and about those kinds of things. So yes, they're starting to work on that, but just like we do, a lot of the teachers that are going to be teaching those math methods classes also have not taught Common Core math. So they need to have a lot of professional development on that to be able to teach it.
You know, funny side story on that question, Mrs. Intihar, I looked over at Mr. Farley. Both of our daughters currently are in elementary ed programs, and they both were in math classes last fall. And it was just a funny side note on a personal level, the math instructional class, quite frankly, was the hardest class, you know, that my daughter had. And she's in the elementary ed program right now at the University of Illinois. So I mean, and I know Mr. Farley's daughter's in the same boat, and they were in class together, actually. And so it's interesting that, I believe, at least on a personal level, the focus that shifted there, at least in what I'm experiencing from my own daughter's perspective, who's in a university program as we speak, so. Just to add to that, I looked over at Bill and we were smiling because, you know, they're both good students, but it was tough, wasn't an easy class at all, so.
It was Common Core?
Absolutely. In fact, my daughter and I were talking a little bit about it over winter break, so it was, yeah, it was interesting that she brought it up. And I didn't bring it up, so it was good.
Can I just ask one question, you and, since our community, our parents are so want to help their kids, and since our report cards will be really specific, do you think like over the summer there'd be something to give them to work on, or is that just too far out to think about?
We are looking at a common parent brochure that all schools could give out about the differences in Common Core. And then we, because of the report card, and that's a great communication device to the parents, they will get a quicker feel for some of the things that have changed and be able to work, our hope is that partner us, then if we're really clear of what needs to be done by the end of first trimester, they'll also be able to help out with that and reinforce that at home. As far as having activities and things to work at at home over the summer, we haven't put a whole lot of thought into that yet, but we could. There's some really great things out there that are available to parents online that we could put links on the websites. Yes?
Along those same lines, with the new vocabulary and the consistent common vocabulary, I mean, if I were to drive even, you know, many years ago, and I was, once I helped my son with math and then he said, "No, Mom, forget about it, I'll do it myself," you know, the vocabulary even between us then was very different. What about sharing that math vocabulary with parents at least so that they could make those connections and be speaking the same language with their students?
Sure, and that's, you know, that's one piece with the list of words, so that would be great. It's a good idea. Anything else on math before we move on to English, language arts? We are already piloting in our freshman and sophomore classes, the new Common Core. A lot of work was done on that last year, and we really wanted to anchor where is that at the high school level and be able to get that in place. As you can imagine, being able to do both language arts and math at the elementary world is very, very cumbersome because it touches every single teacher. But at the high school level, when we're just dealing with the English teachers, we could do some of those things early and get that professional development in place and have a lot more staff that are already knowledgeable at that level as we get ready to have everybody else get on board. So that is going very, very well. And of course, like anything, we're learning a few things, that's the point of a pilot, so that we're ready to go. This year, we created kindergarten through ninth committee. We do have the department chairs from both of the high schools sitting in on that who are really key in developing the freshman, sophomore, and Common Core class, because we want to make sure that kindergarten through eighth is aligned and using the same kinds of terms and vocabulary as we move toward high school. The standards are being reviewed right now, and they're being placed in pacing guides, which is different than what District 200 has done before. What we've usually done are, here is the curriculum for the year, and teachers got to pick the order that it was in. We are not doing that, we're basing, we say, "These are the standards that need to be mastered during first trimester at the elementary, during first quarter at the middle schools, and so on," so that our assessments and our report cards reflect similar standards. Right now, when we give a mid-year test, if teachers decided to teach this skill in October and others decided to teach it in January, it's hard to compare apples to apples. So now we're going to move at a common pacing guide, at least within one grade period. And that's being done right now. And as you can imagine, in English, language arts, there's pairing of reading and writing and, and speaking, so we're looking at what of those standards makes sense to be grouped together for a common unit. Also, we're making vocabulary lists for there. On this, we're going to have teacher vocabulary lists as well, and making sure that when we talk about fluency, are we talking about the same kinds of things. And as I said already, we went and observed all the middle school language arts classes, and we interviewed 142 middle school students about their experiences and what reading comprehension strategies they know. We did this last year at the elementary level, and it gave us a great insight as to what training and what frameworks needed to be in place before Common Core language arts standards arrive. So we did the same thing at middle school this year so that we can begin to have a common framework for what does flexible grouping look like, what does differentiated instruction look like? Because if you give new standards, but everybody is all over the place with their instructional practices, we're not going to be nearly as effective. So we did all of those so that we could have a new framework, and we've already begun that work, and it's been received very, very well. Just like we did with the kindergarten through second grade, the third through fifth grade framework began with reading teachers, then it was edited by principals, then it was taken out to all of the reading teachers, and then every single teacher in grades three, four, or five had input into that before we had a final product. As we're wanting to harness and build a system for all the expertise, we're not wanting to fix what is inappropriate. I'm getting ready to go to the next slide on instructional tech, but I learned what happened with math, so maybe I'll pause here.
Actually, I do have a question. For a long time, it seemed to me at the high school level, there's a large gap between the A level, in language arts, between the A-level class and the R, you know, what was called R-level. I think students recognized there was a big gap, and parents did too. Will this even sum that out, or how?
Yes.
Is there an, has there been an intentional discussion about that?
Yes, and we've gotten rid of all R-level classes, so we're not, you know, that part is gone. But between A and I, or at the math level with middle school, we had several different layers of classes. And we have collapsed those layers, because what you need to know as a sixth grader to be able to be proficient for seventh grade is the same. You can't have sixth graders in a classroom where the standards are that much lower. What we're doing instead is, here are the sixth grade standards, but there are going to be students that need a block period or double time to get it done, or intervention on Tuesdays and Thursdays to help get that done. But what is the final or the end of the year standard is going to be the same. Now, for the upper students, there's going to be some other enrichment activities and things that are beyond that, but we still want to make sure that they have those essential standards so there's no holes there. But quickly, you could move on for some of our higher-level classes and say, "These are the things that are already done," and go to the next level.
And, you know, I misspoke, I really meant A and I, I didn't mean A and R, but yeah, that was the idea, particularly in the language arts.
Actually, I was over at South the week before winter break, and I actually visited, it was after one of the late start days, and it was the sophomore English teachers at, at SOF, and they were meeting and focusing, it was in their PLC group, but I don't want to get into the PLC thing right now. But that's part of the opportunities we have now in those discussions. And I, and Mr. Claypool and I went in there, and we were talking with them exactly about this, this exact situation, about what the expectations are going to be for all kids. You know, there is a minimum expectation of what's going to be expected regardless of where, you know, they're sitting. And I explained to them, basically what Faith just said, talking about our K-12 focus with the Common Core. Now, we may have a couple of years there where we have some challenges, but the bottom line is, the expectation for the kids are going to be in sophomore English, next year is going to be to beat the Common Core expectations and have those kind of assessments. So I did have that firsthand experience, you know, that day when I was over there visiting South and, and watching around the different courses. But that was the sophomore English group that I did stop in on and meet with them.
Instructional tech?
I just, no, sorry.
Am I on?
Yeah.
I love a love when the concept of sharing ideas and if someone's got it, you know, send it out, so if it can be some comment where they just have on Facebook, but something where they just, boom, this worked, and even if they could scan what they did and, and attach them in email, I mean, that is huge, just be sharing.
The tool that we're using to share mathematical practices is called posters.com, and it's really digital folders, so you can drop in links, you can drop in videos, you can drop in Word documents, all of those types of things. So we're looking at whether that could expand, because if you think of how many teachers might be putting something into First Year, we don't want to build and say, "Oh yes, use this tool," and then after 800 people put in their first thing, we're like, "Okay, it's full." So we're looking at that capacity of that. But that is, posters and the way that it has been utilized could be our best bet that we've found so far. All right, instructional tech. My Learning Plan, what My Learning Plan is, and we're still kind of in the initial steps of that, is a place where we can house and publish our course catalogs for U200 in our meetings and keep track of all of the things that teachers need to keep track of for their certification, their CEUs, their CPVUs, all of those types of things. And our course instructors, and Rob and Beth and I and Joanne, a little bit before she went on maternity leave, and got together and we pulled a group of instructors and designed some learning targets for classes. This first round was really on technology, PLCs, Common Core, and a few critical areas for special education. And we gave these trainers some guidelines and some training on how to teach adults, because it's a little different than teaching kids. And then had them design those classes, and then we published those, and we had people sign up for those courses through My Learning Plan. The first round, we need to get better at publishing it, getting people out there, and we're getting ready to go into round two and offer that as well. And then all of the selections for countywide on March 1st, we were able to put in My Learning Plan too, so that we could keep track of all of that information there. Because the instructors can push documents through, can pose questions, can give assignments through there, it's really a robust system that we've only begun to tap into. But that is a way that we're going to continue to offer a lot of the professional development. Talked a little bit about the U200 courses already. You may have noticed in some of the newsletters that Erica puts together, we put more of a focus on instructional tech and how we're using those things, and highlighted classrooms that are doing a really good job with that, so that, as you had said, people know who the shining stars are and know who, "How do I make this tech work?" So that those people are known and they can talk with other staff members. Also, our new electives at the middle school have a much higher focus on technology, and we've implemented those, but now we're in the process of reviewing them, talking about that. And some of the teachers that have taught those classes have had really great experiences and are now talking to others about how we could incorporate some of those same tools in classes that hadn't previously used those technologies.
You saw a little bit of example out of Hubble last, last meeting.
I'm getting ready to leave the instructional tech, so I think, okay. Because of all these changes, we have to have a new elementary report card. The existing report card is off of previous standards. Even the categories in math are different now. Probability is no longer one of the areas. So we started a report card So we started a report card committee and we do have four parents on that that are giving us a lot of feedback as we go. And at one of the very first meetings, somebody said, Faith, we really need to go to trimesters. That was one change I really wasn't anticipating, but I said, well, let's go back and talk to all the staff. I have never seen this much support for an initiative. Everybody, you know, my phone was going off, yes, yes, yes. So we brought that to the subcommittee of the board and we are now going to trimesters for this fall in 2013. So there's a lot of work to be done with that. And along with that, by next year, we'll have a new insert just for math. Because the English Language Arts, we won't have piloted and have that ready. So we'll have a report card that looks very similar to the way it does now, only in trimesters, with a math insert and we'll get our staff used to standard-based grading, which will take an adjustment, especially at the upper grades. And then by 2014, we'll have the English Language Arts and the rest of the card. However, Common Core Science is coming, Common Core Social Studies is coming. So we may be in draft form of tweaking some parts of the report card for quite some time. Also, wanted you to know that when we did make the move to trimesters, I did go speak to all of the PTA presidents in the group here. They listened to me for an hour and a half, talking about standard base and giving them different options. And then I surveyed them and what they thought, not only from themselves, but the other people that they represent. And the support was there for trimesters. So I didn't want you to think we didn't include parents in that process as well. He's next.
That's just K-5.
Yes.
Just K-5, not 612. 612 staying as is.
And then it's really important to me that we not only talk about curriculum or new standards, but we talk about how to improve instruction. So the next slides are just the instructional improvements that we're doing in each of the levels. This first bullet may not look like much, but it's huge. We established minimum times that teachers would teach math and minimum times that they would teach literacy at the elementary level. And we raised it. Many of our elementary teachers had been teaching math for 45 minutes a day. And with Common Core and all of these things happened, we said we had to do 60 minutes. We need to do that. And that was implemented this school year. We made that decision last May and they reworked their schedules and did that. We also then went to 90 minutes of literacy instruction, which for some teachers, that's what they were already doing. For some of the upper grades, this was more. But now we have consistency. As you can imagine, trying to write pacing guides and those kinds of things, a 45-minute lesson is very different than an hour lesson of what you can get accomplished and what needs to have happen. So we established those minimum times. And then this next part, I spent a lot of time working with elementary school teams to create school-wide schedules so that they could better utilize of their resources. If all of the fourth grade teachers taught reading at a similar time, a reading teacher to go in to help and do those things and to do pull-out for ELL becomes easier to do. But not all the schools have been used to thinking about that way. And it gets complicated by half-day pace schedules. The art teacher only comes every Tuesday. I mean, it gets really very complicated. But I had the benefit of hearing 13 different schools' ways of getting the job done. So we had a lot of fun, huh, fun, over the summer, creating these schedules. And the feedback is really coming back that it was worth the struggle because now teams are able to pool their resources and do what's best for kids. The next, yes, go ahead.
Back to your first bullet point, when I was thinking about pace, you brought it up. Now that you have 60 minutes on math, what does that do with the math-paced kids? Do they?
They still have their 45 minutes and they come back for 15 minutes. And 60 minutes of that math instruction could be 15 minutes of supervised, this is what you're working on, to do work. So it's not 60 minutes of the teacher talking to everybody. So it may be time for the pace students to do follow-up work that needed to have happen. We're also encouraging use of puzzles and games that are at the really higher order thinking to be able to get that done. And some of our pace students aren't yet really fluent on their math facts, even though they're brilliant, they don't have some of the basics. So I'm working on math facts and that type of thing is happening for some of our pace students that don't have that yet. So we're not going to use up pace time to do math facts, obviously. The next bullet up there is we brought all of the elementary principals, all the elementary reading teachers, and the elementary sites together. And Joanne and I and a few other people gave a really intense in-service last spring on how to help teams look at their own reading data to decide which students should be in interventions. Prior to that, it had been a district-level decision and here's the cutoffs and here's who goes into interventions, but they know their kids so much better than we do. And each school has a very different level of reading performance that comes in. People have mobility rates, different schools have a different percentage of ELL. It really made sense to train them to utilize the data and the resources to be able to provide those interventions. And we're getting a lot of great feedback as the mid-year data starts coming, that being able to identify the students that they thought needed the intervention is having a big impact. Also, I already talked about the reading frameworks. Those are new for grades eight through five. And then we also went to more of our local assessments being online this year. When the new tests come, eventually, they are supposed to be online. So we do want to give students practice at being able to take reading tests online because that's different than sitting down pencil and paper. And even just the tracking that needs to have happen is different from a computer screen to the keyboard or to paper than a traditional paper pencil test.
Going back to the concept of the school-wide schedules, which is a great thing and I know it's difficult to do, I've gotten some feedback that because there are specials that go between schools, that some schools are teaching reading and math in the afternoon. And that's maybe not the optimal time to do it. Is there any way around that or?
Right, the biggest hindrance to that is the schools that have halftime-paced teachers. Because if you're sharing a teacher, one school's got to have the paced teacher in the morning and one school's got to have the paced teacher in the afternoon. And because those students have a replacement math, for example, that means that if paced math is in the afternoon, all the third, fourth, and fifth grade math classes need to be in the afternoon. I do have some creative thinking, things behind that. Dr. Harris looks like he's going to jump in.
Well, all I was going to say is we're meeting tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon, whichever it is. Faith does have some ideas to deal with this exact issue, talking about the pace situation as well as, you know, ELL and reading teachers and how we might rectify, so that, you know, some of these issues. So we're considering different scenarios. And it's not, that's not involved all schools, it only involves certain schools. Correct, am I saying that right?
Right, six of our schools have halftime-paced program, you know, not halftime-paced programs, but halftime-paced teachers. So the schedule becomes much more complicated and much harder to maneuver for what's best for instruction. All right, middle school? I think the biggest change at middle school this year is we went to school-wide instructional teams. Prior to this year, the middle schools really had more of department leaders and a lot of it was management-type of things and they didn't collectively get together to talk about instruction. So I met with the middle school principals last spring and they said, yeah, this sounds really great. So we had a full day of training. They picked new people and they represent all of the different departments, but then we get together to talk about learning targets, to look at data as a whole as school, so that it's more of a collective effort, kind of like school improvement teams, but really with focusing on student learning and going through and looking through the data on that. And that has been a big change for the district. You look like you're getting ready to talk, yes?
Oh, I mean, I'm confused. When you say instructional team, but not department leaders, what are you talking about? What do you mean? How would, what, who would be in that group?
There's a person from about each department, but instead of them coming and representing their department and talking about, well, here's our needs for textbooks, here's how we're going to be involved in the fundraiser, here's how, those types of things. It's having a person at the table that's from the science department, from foreign language, from social studies, how are we collectively going to talk about PLCs? How are we going to collectively look at our Language Arts and reading data so that science and social studies teachers know about that as well? And what role can they play in helping to get this job done? So it's more of sharing all of the school improvement efforts across all of the departments, not just Language Arts and not just math.
I think that we actually worked with the WWBA on this last spring in the collective bargaining process and we reorganized some stipends and changed the stipends from more of the operational management team leader mode into more of an instructional team mode and really changed some of that culture, starting to change, I should say. You know, that's like turning the Titanic a little bit. We, you know, have different focus of conversations in those meetings and the stipends all changed. And then the association was very willing to do that and actually was one of the good pieces to moving forward with the contract less spreading on those stipends at that level. The stipends are much more targeted toward improving instruction and not necessarily management team, you know, field trips, stuff like that. That's right.
The second bullet up there, if you were to walk our middle school classrooms, you would see a lot more posting of learning targets this year than before. There's a lot of research out there that the more upfront we are with students about what it is we want them to learn, the better chances that they're going to learn it. So classroom teachers are getting in the habit of posting what the learning target or the objective is for the day so that students, it isn't a guessing game of why are we doing this activity? It's very clear. And then also assessing that at the end, so students leave with an understanding of whether they accomplished what they were supposed to for that day or not. So we're working on that.
You know, can I just say that, to me, that sounds like it all goes into 21st century skills? Because if you're sitting in a business meeting, you've got your goal as to what you want to get done at the end of that meeting in front of you. So it's good practice for them.
And then they can reflect throughout and be measuring their own progress on whether they're getting it done or not. So that's great. Also, at the middle school level, we've talked about, we have electives this year with much more academic rigor and emphasis on 21st century skills. There's been a big emphasis on data. Julio is very, very busy with middle school this year. Because of the school instructional teams, you have a lot more people that are hungry for data and diving into item analysis of which of our students didn't get that in sixth grade? How do we make sure they get it in seventh grade? How are we going to share best practices so that we all can work on comprehension of informational text? Julie's had a lot more business with all of her data this year. Just last week, we kind of finalized some of our work with the middle school level. It's also part of a meeting tomorrow with Dr. Harris, of reworking our ELL, our English Language Learners surface delivery at the middle school level. There were some opportunities for improvement to really rethink how we are doing that. And again, Mr. Farley, we're actually suggesting that we're cutting staff to be able to get that job done better. We looked at what we were at elementary, we looked at what we did at high school, we're doing it with less staff and we're getting better results. So we're going to be using some of those same practices and now implementing them at the middle school level. And I already talked about the reading framework quite a bit. That'll be in sixth through eighth. And the big push on that is to be able to differentiate instruction, knowing what the target is, knowing which of your students have it, and then building activities for those students that already mastered it before you ever started teaching, but also providing reinforcement for those kids that are right there. And then also reteaching opportunities for those students that need that. And how to be able to do that within a Language Arts block at the middle school. What materials are needed, what type of assessments? And we're not talking big unit assessments, quick assessments to know students by standards and then training staff on how to create instruction and lessons that both challenge and provide success for all the students in the classroom. Tough job, but there's a lot of research out there on how to do that and this framework will help. Going on to high school? High school, we created, as you know, times and structures for teams to meet on essential learning standards and getting very specific within their teams about what it is they're teaching. And then being able to break that down and post those learning targets on the board for students to be able to do that. And the high school is working through that. Along with that, there are several of our classes that don't yet have common finals between the two high schools. That needs to change because what is proficient at the end of a high school-level class ought to be similar between North and South. So we've had quite a bit of work to do in that area as well. And it's bringing a closer alignment between both of the schools. And I want to compliment the high school administration. We've been spending an inordinate amount of time together. The high school department chairs, we decided, Jill and Dave, the high school principals and I, that we really needed to get the department chairs together with us and get just science and science in the room and go through and talk about. We spent most of the last two weeks in December having those meetings because there's lots of departments at the high school level. But having that conversation and making sure that we're going along the same path is really important. And then I've been meeting with collectively the department chairs and then we're training a large group of PLC facilitators next week, 74 of them. Because on February 15th, all of the high school staffs are coming together for a common training and having the departments all together, the PLCs from both high schools who teach the same thing together, to create not only these common lists of essential standards, but what does proficiency look like on that standard? What is that common final? Is it going to be a project? Is it going to be an art performance? Is it going to be, and what are those types of things? So that we have agreement on that as we work toward common finals. Huge day on February 15th at high schools. Also, I already talked, we just continued the use of the R-level classes. And then this year at both of the high schools, it started some at South last year, providing targeted intervention. And what I mean by that is there are students that are struggling, obviously, in some of the classes. And there's kind of two root causes. There are those people that get it, but don't turn any of their assignments and need motivation help. And then there are those that are really struggling and don't have the skills. To send both of those groups of students to one teacher is not a real good use of our time. So we're dividing and conquering what that looks like because the students that need motivation can even be put in similar groupings. It's not just that they need to hear the science stuff again, they need somebody checking in with them, do you have your homework and what's your GPA look like now? All of those kinds of things. So we're dividing that up and looking at what they really need. Yes?
Now, those R-level classes, are they going away as of the end of this year? Is that, is that my?
The R-level classes, there were a few remnants this year, but the high school course catalog is published for next year and there are no more.
Okay. Because I know North had eliminated theirs and we had a few lingering at South.
Right.
And so as of the end of this year, those will be gone from South.
Right, the new high school course catalog is on my desk and there are no R-level All right, I want to talk a little, I want to talk a little bit about some of the trainings that have happened. Because as you can imagine, all of this work takes a lot of training and it also takes a lot of communication. We spoke a little bit about anxiety level and I consider it my job to build this system and have trainings and enough communication so people have it spoonful by spoonful, not, you know, overwhelming amounts of information. So here's some of the ways that we had done this. In August, we had 190 staff members, kindergarten through eighth grade, come together and work on improvement teams. Elementary was on one day and middle school with their new structuring, but that was huge. And looked at data, looked at what they can do as school-wide teams, had sharings because we had some schools that had really big success and we want that to spread. Then in September, we had 73 high school facilitators trained for a full day. In November, 210 elementary staff received the second training on the K-2 framework because the last one was last year. They've been implementing parts of it, but just like anything, once you get into it, you realize what you don't know. So we wanted to do that. And then just in January, we had all of those training for the elementary staff on grades three through five. And that's just a highlight of some of the trainings and it's only from my department. It isn't all of the other things that are going on in special education and through technology. I mentioned communication. This is huge, what we need to do to have all of this through. And these are just a couple of avenues. And I wanted to explain to you what Faith Ann Carter's, because you may hear that around and I don't know what that brings to mind, but I want to clarify. What are the data reviews are, is that I go to each of the schools and sit with the principals and sometimes the assistant principals and their teams and we go through the data and we look at their data. we look at their data compared to other schools on similar subgroups. And that comparison has really helped teams know what I did, what areas they need to improve on and also know where are the shining stars within District 200 that we can call and find out how they're doing this. So that's been really good. And then Faith on a Cart, at first it was here's all about what is PLCs. And then there was more information, oh, I need to talk to you about Common Core. This last round, I did my fourth, today, I think of this round, was really just an opportunity for me to listen to the staff. So I'm going around to each of the schools, maybe talking for two or three minutes, and then I want to hear from them. I want to hear what their concerns are, what their questions are, because it's my job to build a system that this is all going to help us work smarter, but I'm only capable of doing that if I get honest and sincere feedback. We have a tremendous amount of expertise in District 200. We just have to build systems of communication and support frameworks for us all to work together. So this round has been really critical for them to give me feedback and to ask me questions that they don't feel comfortable sending an email. And that's been really good. Then we do put out a curriculum update every month. I think Dr. Harris has sometimes forwarded them to you. And that's just a brief update with a whole lot of links to keep people in the know of how we're progressing on these big projects. Now I just threw in a few fun facts. We've had 743 staff members that participated in trainings for 2,298 hours all outside the school day. And then that's just within the curriculum this year. And then by May, we'll have 880 staff that will have completed 7,200 hours of math training. Now that is in each staff member doing 7,200 things. And then we do have 240 staff on district curriculum committees. So there's a lot of involvement as we go through. And then if you think about that minute change that I talked about at math, most of our math at the elementary level was 45-minute lessons. We've gone to 60 minutes. If you multiply that by 180 days, it's 45 more hours of math instruction this school year. That's going to help us tremendously with the new implementation of Math Common Core. And then just wanted to throw in, our ADK has expanded. So all day kindergarten, we have 85 more students than we did last year, and that is also going to help us tremendously. I have to say thanks to the staff. District 200, dedicated, knowledgeable, collaborative, and really for the most part open to all of this tremendous change. We're, we're asking for paradigm shifts, huge amounts of workload, time on their own on Saturdays and looking through materials to be ready for do this. And for the most part, they're there. They're saying, okay, Faith, if you build it, you know, we'll come, just, you know, put it all together. And they work outside the contract and they work lots and lots on all of these things. So I didn't want you to think that this work up there is the Faith show because it's not. It's all of these different people that are on committees that give of their own time and their hours to help us make great decisions. What's next? Sorry for you all, I'm on at the next, I'm at the hall as well. And then we're going to talk about professional learning communities because the professional learning community is really what's driving a lot of this conversation and allowing this to happen. So we did give out a survey to all the staff and I have that, those results, and I want to share that information with you and then also update you on the progress on the implementation of professional learning communities. Last slide, questions?
Have you found with all this committee work and, I mean, it's a ton of work at them, but because you have involved them so much that it feels like it's raised the culture or the excitement or the unity, is it maybe too soon?
I think there's different levels of that. Certainly for the people that are at the committees all the time, that are in the know and they're doing presentations and there's all, you know, that. And then there's the people that faithfully read the curriculum updates, they're more in the know. And then you have people who somewhat read the curriculum updates and they're like, well, it's, it's not happening until August, you know? They're not as a part of that. But definitely when I went around on Faith on a Cart this time around, there's people nodding, yeah, I get that. There isn't that we're doing, we're doing what? When? They're like, oh yeah, you sent that out already. Oh yeah, I remember that. So there is common understandings of the timeline and what kind of support is going to be there. And then all of these committees, we make it an effort to have at least one person from every school on those committees. So there's a person at their building that they can go to and that helps build that cohesion. Definitely the reading framework is helping us move forward and have in common ways to talk about reading instruction and you can sense that at the K2 level already. Three through five, we're still new at it, but I anticipate that happening.
You know, one thing Faith mentioned a couple of times, Joanne, that I think is significant, and Faith and I've talked about this, is we've provided a lot of that training that, you know, different topics, different things. It's all been outside of the school day. In the past, we used to sub out quite a bit. Quite frankly, we cut our sub budget significantly over the last several years and we just don't sub out as much, you know? And actually, there's good reason for that. We don't want them out of the classroom. And we don't pay them extra to come. And a lot of those are voluntary, you know, they don't, they aren't required to be there. And, but interestingly enough, they're all coming. I mean, pretty much, you're getting, I don't know what percent it is, but it's pretty, is it 100? I don't think it's 100.
The great three through five framework, we were supposed to have about 80 people at each of the sessions. And the lowest number we had was 93. And I had to bring in extra chairs because middle school people started showing up to the three through five framework because they wanted to know about it because they have students that are below level and knew that. So it's, and that's from 4:00 to 5:30 on a Thursday night. So kudos to staff that they're, that they're doing that.
And we're not paying them. I think even in the past, when we were in a much better financial situation here, there was a lot more payment involved, a lot of subbing out. We're not doing that. And we're just not doing it. So it's pretty significant. That's a culture shift and, and I think it is a testament to our staff that they, they do want to do the right thing. You know, because of significant budget challenges over the last few years, we haven't done a lot of curriculum work. We haven't done a lot of instructional PD. A lot of stuff was put on hold. And this year, it has all ramped up significantly, late last spring and now obviously throughout this school year. And certainly got plans moving forward over the next year or two.
Well, first of all, those people come because of your leadership. They told me that.
I did not talk with them.
And you said one of the things on Faith on the Cart this time around is you're two-minute in the beginning and then you listen. But I've heard you listened all the way through this whole process. And this whole process has not been easy. I remember going to a education board meeting and everybody was all nervous about Common Core two years ago because we were going to have dual report cards, we were going to have this, we had different, and that, we had a short period of time to do it. What in the world was going to happen when all these things came crashing down on us? You have made it look, with a tremendous amount of work, very easy as now we are in the process and we're basically almost halfway through in, in the implementing and piloting and the discovering of what we have to do. I, I just think it's, it's remarkable. I've always known our teachers would cooperate with us, but it does take the leadership that you bring to it to get them all to show up and want to work from 4:00 to 5:30 on Thursdays and other times and summers without screaming and hollering about, about a stipend and so on and so forth. So, you know, it's very, it's a very difficult job and you've done an awful lot of work to make this happen. And everybody has contributed, the entire staff supports all that, I know, but, you know, I think it's tremendous that we're, that we're getting into that with the other 46 states. And I just hope that the other districts around us and everybody else is doing the quality of work and the planning and the, and so on that we're doing here because it's a, I think it's going to pay off long-term for us and our college and career readiness, you know? And I'm really excited about it. So a personal thank you to you and your entire staff and everybody else that's involved with it and all the teachers that are also working with you.
Thank you for the kind words and I'll make sure to pass that on because I'm, you know, I'm not so alone in this.
Faith, I want to echo what Ken said. I've told you off and prior, I've heard the same thing, so kudos to you and your staff. But for one question, when I was in the service, we always told us that always are going to be that 10% that just don't go along the program. I'm not surprised that by and large, for the most part, as you put it, our, our staff is doing it. It's wonderful, but it's for the most part. What are we doing to address that 10%?
On the large slide that you have that has all of the different 2013, 2014, one of the things that will be creating for Common Core Math and then again for Common Core Language Arts is an integrity monitoring tool. And that sounds kind of scary, it's a whole lot of academic words, but really what it means is if a principal goes into a classroom, what are the things that they need to be looking for to know that Common Core is being implemented? And what are the key things that they, on all of their different walkthroughs should be seeing and taking notes on? And then my staff will also be doing classroom walkthroughs to see that that's happening because you're exactly right. Just like when you teach any group, whether it's kindergartners or whether adults, you have those people that are earlier doctors and those people that come along and the people are like, yeah, I need a little help. So we want to put tools in the hands of principals to help identify those staff members that haven't gotten with it yet and need assistance in professional development. And of course, the integrity monitoring tool has some commonalities from Kindergarten and fifth grade, but it won't be identical because there'll be different components to look for. And then as we do the framework, already the elementary principals are able to have conversations about, well, we all said we were doing this because the first part is to have common expectations so that it is a surprise about what we want staff to be able to do. And then going in and monitoring it and giving the support along the way because some of it is just professional development. They aren't being difficult, but if they haven't had the training on how to teach math this new way, we certainly couldn't expect them to do that. So we have to identify that and then do the walkthroughs and it'll take several of those. And we'll have to revisit with some staff and revisit again with some staff. And then there'll be other people that could already get up and give this presentation better than I could on Common Core Math. Along those same lines, and, and kudos to you and your staff as well, you know, I feel we're in great hands in terms of what we expect our students to learn and be able to do and, and getting all that pushed out there. Are you planning anything special for the beginning of the school year? You know, a math hotline or, you know, some sort of, you know, I mean, I would anticipate it's like any other implementation, whether it's a technology, new teaching, you know, there's always that initial burst of, you know, the anxiety peaks and, you know, you've got people frantic, no matter how well they may be, they may feel they're prepared, you know? So are you planning anything special? We're exploring different options. We haven't solidified that, but one of the things that we're discussing with the math committee is making sure that at every, there's a, a district expert, so to speak, at that grade level or a couple, and they're sending out just-in-time emails because to get a whole professional development piece and remember that from April or even from September, what they say when you're in December and there's a new unit on fractions, to give some, hey, here's, remember we need to do this part, remember these are the key math categories and breaking it into, you know, half of a screen or less so people will read it. But then those people would also be available for, because they've piloted, they've been a part of breaking apart the standards and are very knowledgeable and have had some of the extra trainings on math. So they would be some of the go-to people because people are much more likely to go to the teacher that they know or the teacher down the hall. And we're developing some of those experts for our training on February 15th and March 1st so they've already will have seen them, know who they are and, and being available to answer some of those late-night questions.
Have you thought about using webinars to, you know, and they can just at midnight look at this?
Yeah. Some of the feedback to Faith on a Cart is, well, Faith, you should do podcasts every week. I know. But there has been some, some talk about that. Definitely the parent component, as I've gone around to different PTAs, the suggestion is Faith, you need to put your 15-minute presentation on podcast so that people wouldn't have to come to a school and, you know, and hear it. So yes, on some of that, I would like, if we go that route, to have our district teachers be some of that expertise, not just, you know, me. Because I'm certainly not the content expert on all things pre-K through 12th grade in all subjects. And there's so much expertise within our district. And getting that word out through webinar might be a way to go.
Well, thank you very much. Obviously, we've probably taken more time than you anticipated that we were going to take, but I hope this, you know, you can understand, this is very exciting to us and really it is our core, the core business and I'm sure every single one of my fellow board members say it's things like this that just make the service worthwhile and exciting and you just go home and think, wow, great things are happening. So thank you very much. And I think Ken had the words of the evening here in terms of signing up our appreciation for all that you do.
Thank you very much. The hour has been, I can talk curriculum 24/7, so it was good.
Faith will be joining us again in February at the Committee of the Hall. We'll be talking more specifically about PLCs, you know, because that was a pretty significant change this year in our staff PD structures and times, so we'll focus more on that, not so much on the what, but the how.
Thanks, Faith.
Okay, now we're going to shift gears to finance and, and budget and specifically the financial forecast. Where we sit as Mr. Farley and I began to prepare the budget for this coming year, we've always have to take a look at where we've been and where we're headed to be able to accurately prepare our budget for the 13, 14 school year. So we are starting that. I'm going to turn over the bill at this time and he's going to run through a lot of the details about where we sit currently financially.
Thank you. As always, Faith, a tough act to follow. I'm going to run through the presentation tonight from the, our financial planning program that we've utilized. I believe this is the 10th year since PMA, since the inception of the program at PMA Financial Network, who I believe all the board is familiar with, they use for investments, we use as a financial advisor and we also use them for this model. They've also recently came out with the database program for a new company called Forecast Five that's new and exciting that the district has participated in as well. So you'll probably see that here. And that's a preview of a coming attraction, and we can quote that from Harris there. Anyway, the program has been in place in the district since I've been, took the assistant super role in the district back then. PMA Financial is in a small office out in Warrenville. Mike English, who was president of the company, came out and actually presented it the first time. He's a resident in the district and when the district signed on, we, he wanted to come out and roll it out in hometown. This presentation has been given multiple times to multiple groups. It's been a key use in our financial committees, finance committees, be it the board one that's been more recently run or the previous ones with citizens groups. We've rolled it out on multiple occasions to our bargaining groups as we prepare for negotiations. During this last negotiation, we did two presentations to the bargaining group. So, so staff and the, and the bargaining groups are seeing the same thing the board was seeing and so they understood what the financial situation is and they, I believe they played a key factor in some of the agreements we've gotten over the last couple of bargains. And I think the board has negotiated very favorable contracts, very fair contracts that fit in with the current financial situation of not only the school district but of the state of Illinois. Dr. Harris and I have also taken this presentation on the road. I think in your first year, we went out and presented. We didn't exactly pack the room, but we presented it week north and I believe we turned it south. So this presentation, as I said, and this, and the use of this tool has been around for the past five years or 10 years, excuse me. So what is the FDP? It's a comprehensive interactive planning process that the district uses. And again, how do we use a plan? We use it for budget planning. It gives us a five-year historical look back as well as our current budget year, which is kind of the starting point of this and then a five-year going forward. We, we use it to set fiscal policies, most recently on the Finance Committee, Mr. Gambiani and who else was on? Well, I think Mr. Johnson was on at the time when we set our fund balance policy, which the board did not have at the time, and we used that, this model to set that fund balance policy. We are able to update and, and use this model throughout the whole budget process. At the last meeting, the Board of Education indicated through a resolution to start the budget process for 13, 14. indicated through a resolution to start the budget process for 13, 14, giving me the instruction to get her going. Budget process is a, you know, a full-year process. That's the official kickoff. We've done this presentation the last few years. We work pretty exclusively with Mike Francis. The last seven years, Mike's been out presenting it though. And we don't want to mix it up when people are tired of seeing me up here talking about it. But we work very exclusively with Mike and have this model. And as we looked at some of the refinancing that we were doing and some of the projections, it's been very helpful as FA to have them have access to this model as well and use some of the same assumptions. And then again, we use it for scenario analysis. Talked a little bit about the history. Some of the reports we use are standard state reports. The annual financial report for the past five years we use. As I mentioned, the district uses this year's budget as a base. We use historical tax extension reports. We look at, you know, history of how taxes are coming in or what percentage, you know, when the economy's there returning. The way the percentages were coming into the school district were a little bit different over time, how much was collected. Look at EAV and new growth. Obviously, new growth impacts our tax levy as well. I mentioned before in the introduction, we use it for contract and scattergram information. That's all we put it into the model, as well as benefits information enrollment and then student-staff ratios. This is another component that can be used in. This is the current budget as it stands. As you can see, this illustrates, or some of our budget presentation illustrates where the funds are coming from on both the local, state, and federal level. We'll get a little bit more detail here in a second. It shows just where the budget, how the budget stands for this fiscal year. The Consumer Price Index, as the board is keenly aware that the Consumer Price Index is part of PTEL, the tax caps, and indicates how much the district requests over the previous year's tax rate extension. Over the past 10 years, the CPI has averaged about 2.4%. And I'll talk a little bit about that here as we move forward and how that is impacted in the model. Reason this is a great time to talk about, do this presentation that board might have chosen January to do it. The CPI came out last week that we will use for the 2013 levy. It came in at 1.7%. If you recall, when I presented the 2012 levy, I showed you kind of an indicator of where the levy was trending based off the current index and where it was kind of sitting. It was up a little bit higher than the 1.7. I think I indicated at the time, like thoughts were with the price of gasoline, which seems to be the key indicator to drive the CPI. We saw the gas pumps fall a little bit in December, fall a little bit more, a little bit. That I was considering that the CPI would probably come in lower. We were using 2% of the time and it ended up coming in at 1.7. Again, you can see the CPI, the highest it ever was was in 2008 at 4.1. And the lowest it was is when it crashed back in 2009, 1.5%. Again, I'm sure the board is keenly aware of the CPI. We use the CPI or 5%, whichever is greater. And again, the highest we've ever got is 4.1. But going forward, as I mentioned, we've seen about a 10-year average right in the 2.4, 2.5 range. That's about the same for the past four years as well. We use 2.5% as an indicator for the levying going forward.
Is the CPI 5% or whichever is less?
Correct. Did I say that correctly?
No, I just agree with what that's...
I'm sorry, whichever is less, excuse me. It's 5% or CPI, no more than 5%. On the revenue assumptions for property taxes, again, this is the new growth model. And obviously, the economy impacts the new growth. Always like to point out some of the anomalies on the chart. As I mentioned during our levy presentation, $30 million has been kind of been in the benchmark. If you go back further, before 2008, we were right around that number. We saw it dip down a little bit in 2009 as the economy started to change. In 2010, the number shot up greatly because of the cantoritis. So that's obviously the impact there. 2011, again, it dropped down again. 2012, going forward, we're using 30 million. Just a reminder, as I also mentioned in the last levy presentation in Warrenville, TIP 2 ended early. So we bumped up to 2012 levy because we were bad tax, that new growth was coming back onto the tax rolls. Again, that tip was added about three or four years early, TIP 2. Again, I mentioned there was a consideration of the TIP 3 that's going on right now. It's not, because they're discussing it. So we've set the benchmark then going forward at a flat 30 million for new growth. And we have a bump there in 2016. We recently had our TIP meetings for the city of Wheaton and TIP 1. And Wheaton will be ending here in the coming month, or the coming year. So that's the first of the Wheaton tests to come back onto the tax rolls. Other revenue assumptions that are in here, corporate personal property replacement tax is projected at about 1.6 million going forward. That number is a decrease. There's also discussion of CPRT going with all the others. We heard that. There's, you know, I'll talk a little bit more on the state side, some of the things that have gone away in recent years. But there's also discussion of that. There's also, as you may recall, they were digging into CPRT a little bit to keep the ROEs open years ago that started up. So based off the estimates, we're seeing that as a decline. Investment income, as we talked about, the refinancing of bonds, it's a great time to refinance. I'm sure a lot of people are close to going with their homes as well. Interest rates are at a historic low. Unfortunately, investment income is also at, at and maintained at a historic low level instead of earning billions of dollars in interest earnings in the school district where earning tens, thousands of, you know, the investment income was just miserable at this point. Makes the fact that the state doesn't pay on time, not as big a deal, I guess. But that's, again, historically low rate of return on investment income. All other projected local revenues, we're keeping at the current FY13 level for this, per our revenue assumptions going forward. On the state side, this continues to be interesting as the state tries to decide what they want to do with general state aid. If you recall, the school district, I'll show a chart in a minute, it used to be a foundation-level school district. When the state stopped increasing the foundation level, the district slipped into the alternate method, which is the next level down. There's a prorated amount based off the foundation level. We used to be concerned when they weren't increasing the foundation level. They thought it would be need to keep the foundation level flat but uncertain prorated that way, that number doesn't go down. I guess it makes me feel better about it. So anyway, the foundation level is prorated this year to about 90%. We're using 85% for FY14 and that 80% thereafter. We're not continuing to hear any good news right now about this general state aid and where they're going to fund it. Of course, the state superintendent is going to request a 91% proration for general state aid. So we're predicting it'll be somewhere in that range where we're using 85% going forward. And again, we remain in the alternate formula. Other state categorical grants, we're keeping pretty much as projected as current funding levels. Remember, ADA block grant, reading grant, gifted grant, tax book funds. You know, all of those grants are gone. All that's really left is some of the specialized ELL and driver's education. We're moving that one up a little bit based off of anticipation. But yeah, there's not a lot of funding there. Also, just a footnote on state payments. We received our first categorical payment this month. This is a September payment. So they're pretty much caught up with the first quarter categorical payments here in the start of the third quarter. So we don't know when the December payment or the March or June payments will come. But we're hoping we'll see at least two, if not three, payments. I know they're talking about having to borrow more money for other bills they've got to pay. But that's TBD out here. So just so the board is aware, the first quarter state categorical payment came in the last couple of weeks.
Mr. Farley, can I jump in here for just a second? I want to reinforce something to begin with the state. The state, and I know the board recognizes and knows this, it is a wild card, what goes on in Springfield. I hear different reports pretty much daily, you know, depending on which way the wind's blowing and depending on what revenue's coming, whether they're going to borrow the money to pay their debts, whether they're going to rate different things. You know, this corporate personal property replacement tax may come and go. You know, we keep hearing all types of things. Transportation funding, you know, one moment I hear that they're going to zero it out and throw everything into general state aid. Essentially, we're down to almost very, very little funding in transportation. Five, six years ago, we were receiving almost 80, 85% of transportation reimbursement. Is that correct, Mr. Farley?
Yeah, regular transportation was around $2 million. We're receiving about $400,000.
Yeah. So I mean, this is the pattern the state has gone in every category, except for special ed and driver's ed and ELL. However, you know, they're still paying those, but they pay them six months in the rear all the time. And then they, and then the fourth quarter payments the last couple of years haven't even come at all, correct?
They've come very late.
Yeah. Into the next fiscal year. So it really, you know, so, you know, I want to just make sure we're doing the best we possibly can and being extremely conservative with the state projections here. If it happens to change in some regard, you know, that'll be on the plus side. But we're being, you know, we're estimating low. And if they come in higher, they come in higher. It is becoming more and more of a significant concern. Fortunately, you know, nearly 80% of our revenue is kind of a local property tax, you know, for us. So that is the stable piece of our revenue stream. The state piece is so inconsistent. So just want to reinforce that significantly. And going down to Springfield the first week in February, to hopefully get a better feel, the leader group, we're going to be meeting with the state superintendent as well as with legislators to get a better feel for where things may be headed.
I did also want to mention a few years ago, the specialized extraordinary, now it's called students' special services. They did, there was a whole harmless that went away. I think the board recalls, we lost about $93 in funding. And then specialized as well. So just another, you know, indicator of where the state has tricked away at dollars inside of the school district.
Hey, Bill, if I may, on the general state aid, where you've made the assumption that 80% proration, what's that mean from a revenue standpoint on...
I have got a slide and I'll show you that in a second here. One thing to note too, and I'll talk about it when we get to the general state aid here. Here's the last, again, in the darker blue, indicates the last five years' history of where general state aid has been. And as you can see, we're down to 6.3 million. We were five years ago a little over $9 million. The year before that was 9.7 million. So again, you can see all of that loss of funding was occurring at the same time we were getting a 1.10, 10.4% CPI and the economy was crashing. So it was kind of the perfect storm for a lot of school districts, municipalities, businesses. So lots changed in five years. I heard on the national news tonight, though, that the stock market is now back to where it was five years ago. So maybe, and housing, again, housing's getting better in Atlanta. Maybe we're finally starting to turn it around a little bit. But again, this is the projection of where we're at. It's somewhat stable because we're in that alternate method. Again, the board remembers when we were in foundation level and there were the violent swings and how much we were getting based on what was going on with the, how much they were putting into the foundation level.
Okay, so let me ask again one more time to make sure I understand this. We are, so the wild card, the wild card in Springfield right now is being accounted for in this model by using the 80% proration factor? Is that, I mean, because a lot of things can happen. This CPRT could go away, the transportation funding could, you know, go to nothing. And the way we're accounting for that in our projections going forward is by assuming an 80% proration factor, even though it's been 89 this year.
We're using 85% for next year and then 80%, 80% flat three years after.
Okay.
Because we're not confident that this ain't going to be at that point, at least.
Right. I'm just saying that that's what we're using to account for all the wild cards.
And two factors of stability in the state, general state aid formula right now are, we're in the alternate method, so there is not, again, the violent movement. Also, the poverty, the amount of money, I mean, poverty grants that's coming back to the district is actually keeping it somewhat stable as well. The poverty grant formula is in the use of the general state aid as well. So that's why it stays somewhat flat here in the projection going out even with the proration.
So in other words, those numbers include the proration in there? When we're looking at it, that's got the proration. And I think Barbie's a good point because I think, you know, we try to emphasize what the concerns are so that everybody's aware of it and we're working on it. But then sometimes it may sound as if we don't have a grip on it. And I think what you're saying is, is that we're building as much of that in as we can.
What we know is there. What we know for a fact, you know, with our 1.7 CPI, with what state revenues we believe are there, we're estimating those very conservatively to make sure we don't overestimate and then come in, you know, on the low side in revenues. We're staying down in a very conservative model to make sure that we don't overestimate revenues. Because I don't trust what they're doing.
And I understand that. But what, I guess the point I was trying to make is that we can put in all kinds of different little variables. You know, what if our transportation goes to zero? What if our this goes to that? What if the CPRT goes away? It doesn't seem we're doing that, but we're accounting for that by keeping this at 80%. Is that, did I say that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, you are correct. Now, the bottom line is if something crazy does happen and, you know, 1.1, what it was to see corporate, well, 1.6, 1.5, whatever it is, if that would all of a sudden go away, well, then we'd have to look at our expenditures. I mean, that's the reality of what happens there. And to get a balanced budget, you know, you all know that. So then we'd be coming back with some changes. You know, all of a sudden our revenue changes, then we got to really look hard at expenditures. So, but we have built in, you know, an assumption that some of the state stuff's going to continue to dwindle. We've got that built in here to make sure that we're prepared so we don't get into a tailspin.
Going to, just some sensitivity issues so the board understands how some of the finances are impacted. On the C, for the CPI as an example, for the tax levy. And we're, every 1% is approximately about $1,300,000 to our tax levy. New property, every million of new property growth is about plus or minus $42,000. Going to Mr. Gambiani's question about the proration, every 1% equals about $71,000. Every 100, this is kind of a joke. But every $100 they add to the foundation level is about $115,000 more to the school district. Again, they have not, you know, added to the foundation level here in a few years and they're now going to proration with foundation level. So again, I think that answers your question, Mr. Gambiani.
So Jim, you can see that's $71,000. So for every 1% they prorate down, you know, this past year was 89%. So times $71,000 for us, for our district, that's what that means. So it's 11 times 71, that's how much less we received. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're going to move into expenditures now. Again, those are the assumptions we're using in the revenue side. Again, local is pretty, you can, now that we know the CPI and, you know, the only wild card there is probably the new growth. We think we're going to be pretty close to that. We added a $20 million, we bumped it up to 30 with the TIP ending early. State, again, seems to be a wild card. And federal, we're obviously on a term very closely as well. Switching over to the operating side for expenditures. You can see here's the budget for this year. Obviously, salary and benefits makes up a large portion of what we do. The rest is the purchase of services and supplies. So here's some of the expenditure assumptions that we've used in the model. 14 and 15 for teacher salaries are locked in into current contract. Again, we settled a very unique contract. The model wasn't, when they designed it, wasn't really set up for some of the nuances, quarter stop, half stop, you know, and obviously, the third year's tied into a factor of the CPI. So we had to do some, you know, even when we were bargaining and working with PMA, we had to kind of tweak the model to make it work because it's obviously a unique, it was a unique settlement. Again, I think very favorable, but a very unique one. So for the next two years, on the teacher side, we've got those factors built into the model. Going forward, we just tied it in to 2.5%, which is again, that CPI number, the historical CPI number we use going forward, plus the lane movement that we've also included in there for staff that's moving across the schedule.
Bill, can I ask about that 2.5 CPI? Why choose that when most recently it was 1.5? I mean, if you look at that chart, it's kind of been all over the place. So if you're going to be conservative, why go with 2.5? And let me, I should have prefaced that by saying, you've always ended up being right in terms of how it comes out. So I know there's some rationale there.
Well, we do track it very, you know, throughout the year. I'm tracking it nonstop and following each month. And others of mine all sit there convinced about it. But we do, we've used that historical 10-year average of 2, right at 2.5%. Again, the last four years, it's... 1/2%. Again, the last four years, it's, I think, had an average of about 2.4. You know, five years it goes down a little bit because you have that 1/10th of a percent, but you started, you know, we've had a couple odd variances in there, but for the most part you're right a little bit above, a little bit, you know, the CPI we just approved was 3%. So it, you know, it kind of evened itself out at about 2 and 1/2%.
So the answer isn't based on a historical 10-year average?
Correct. So we've used that. Again, that's just, that's just a placeholder. We don't, this isn't part of bargaining or anything like that, but we have to, you know, put a, put a value into the model. So that's what we use, just a flat percentage. Support staff, FY14 is in place. We've used 2% for both, for FY15 for both support and administrative. And then FY14 is what it is. And then, or FY14 and 16 and then 2 and 1/2%, just again, the historical number that's to be determined. Expenditure assumptions for health and dental, again, is another big piece of it. We've got our 7% annual increases in there. We do continue to monitor the impact of Obamacare. It does impact our organization. We're continuing to look at that. There are, you know, there's still, now that the election's over and the Supreme Court voted and everything, they're starting, the rules are starting to come down. There's looking like there's gonna be at least a $60 per person in the plan, every man, woman, and child that the district's gonna have to pay. That's gonna be coming down the pipe here, not this next fiscal year, but the year beyond that. So we're continuing to monitor the impacts of that. Again, the board approved and negotiated and approved a good contract across a few years. Our plans went down significantly, around 20% on the health side. And, and we've seen modest increases in the last couple of years. Remember, our plan year is from October to, to September. So it's not on the same cycle as our budget. So it kind of blends over that, over that time period. But again, we've seen some of the impact of some of the Obamacare stuff already and what we have to offer. But we're keeping a 7% number in there. And then we've used 2 and 1/2% on everything else. Worth noting, we've got bids going out on transportation and custodial services this year. Those are two of our large purchase services that the school district is, obviously uses for, we, for student for transportation and GCA, a bit of custodial source in the past few years. So those bids are going out. So that could see, have an impact on the purchase services as well.
This is probably a question for another time. So if you want to defer it, that's fine. But, you know, do we expect that the big process will actually bring our costs down? Because, you know, there's a couple of vendors who are kind of the only game in town for a district our size. And so, I mean, if we decided we are definitely going out to bid, or is that still a decision that the board will have to make in terms of, do we want to renew or go out to bid? I don't remember having made that decision.
Yeah, our plan is, our, I guess my concern is probably greater on the transportation side. We could bid it out and see a significant bump up, especially because, you know, there aren't a lot of folks out there that can run routes to cover, you know, we run 300 regular routes a day. We have a lot of special ed routes to run. So there is that concern that, you know, for students on current, I know it's that they're the only ones to bid, they could set the price. So that is a concern. We are, we had a three-year contract. We did a one-year renewal at, at 0%. We could look at another one year because we can do a three and then, you know, two more years. We're looking to bid it out. And we could always give a 20 bidder, reject a bid and try to go back and negotiate a price. You know, so to answer your question, transportation's a little trickier. You know, they could come back in at 6% and then, yeah, it's a different ballgame.
You know, we, we are statutory required every five years, correct? If I'm wrong, you 're probably to bid out transportation. Is that correct?
You can do a three-year and then usually the, usual MO is do a three-year and you can do up to a two-year.
But we're in a fourth year right now. So we would have the option to go one more, but you know, it's always a matter of, of what point do we, you know, go out to bid? And Bill said we would have options and we could reject, you know, depending on, and go out again. You know, you always roll the dice with that. The last couple of years, we've held tight. We had zero and we, you know, we held tight on those for that particular reason. At some point we have to. It's just a matter of whether now's the time or, or a year from now. So then a year from now, we're up against it then, see? So, you know, it might be the best strategy at this point to go out now and then see what we got. Cause then we could go back to them, reject the bid and then say, hey, we want to do one more year. You see? So there's a strategic approach with transportation. Cleaning's the same way. There are little different rules on that. Isn't that correct? You want to just comment briefly on those with, with the cleaning? I know we've been with GCA for a long time and we've rolled that contract a couple of times, correct?
Right.
For the same reasons.
Right. And we, we were bargaining last year. We did not want to lock ourselves into those contracts, which is why we were waiting for the single year until we could get the, you know, the salary stuff figured out for the, for the bargaining to get going. So, and, and custodial sourcing is kind of a different animal. There are some different rules that will follow the path.
But remember, we were bargaining the teacher contract at that time. So that was our number one expense. So, you know, now we've got those fixed in for a couple of years. We have a little more, you know, forecast to determine where we could sit with these two contracts. It is the time to bid those. That's what we believe at this point. Certainly that's our recommendation.
So again, I just wanted to mention with those two, two of the larger purchase services out there, that we've got those, you know, in play. Certified staffing, we've kept staffing flat across here going forward based on the current year. Teaching have the only. Some additional assumptions, no legislative changes in school funding. I mean, we're anticipating keeping it somewhat similar. No change to the tax cap law. We don't see anything like that coming. The model does include a potential TRS, a little pension shift coming down the pipe. So this, we have put in a half percent a year, about 440,000 compounding each year into this model. So when you get to the final slides here, you'll see what the impact of that is. So we are, although it hasn't happened, we're still modeling it. Just so the board knows. I don't know how it's going to play out. I don't know, you know, pension shift doesn't have a constitutional impact. That obviously is one of the big issues out there. Senator Culler, he's got a couple of ideas out there. The pension shift was on, or was on and it was off to try and get some, some, something done. The lame duck did not happen. They're gonna, you know, probably push it off here into this next, they're, you know, coming in this next session. You know, whether, how it'll play out, I don't know how the pension piece of it will play into the factor. I don't know if, if they get past May 31st, they're gonna do super majority, get something like that passed. You know, once the budget, the budget gets done, whether or not, you know, there's a lot here at play. But for the purposes of the model, we are putting in that expense. So.
Yeah, we just put it in there. And you know, quite frankly, if it doesn't happen, then it's 440 to the good. But we, you know, we'll, we'll show it in a positive light. But we, we absolutely believe that something's gonna happen at some point. And right now, this is our best guess. Cause this is what's been floated out. This is what's been discussed. Until something else is discussed, then we'll make the adjustment.
The other thing I think that's in the model that's of very big significance, we talk about sal people, salary and benefits being our largest number. We have 143 teachers going out in the next four years. That equates to about 16 and 1/2 million dollars of salary. Then equates to 61 in the last year, 2000, excuse me, 2016. That has a significant impact on the model going forward. It was in there last year when we talked about this, the 2000, the class of 16's big. But we also have the next, you know, few years here, a large number of staff going out. So even if we hire all those folks back, you know, all those positions back at half the price, I mean, there's obviously some significant savings that is built into this model. Again, we don't know where we'll be staffing wise, but again, that, that, I think that 143 staff members, that 16 and 1/2 million dollar tag is, is quite, you know, significant. Are we losing a lot of, you know, that experience, that of teachers? Absolutely. But also, you know, they're coming off, coming off the schedule as well. A lot of those folks up to 16 are still, you know, we're in the track of this contract. So, so, so that's a significant factor as we went forward as well. And then we use, obviously we said we use FY13 budget as the startup. This is a chart I'm gonna step up here even though I got my glasses on. I'm gonna step up. This is the operating budget of the district. And there's a few lines that I want to, I want to point out to the board that are of importance. The first one is the surplus deficit. This is the operating budget of the school district. So as you can see for next year, we're, we're pretty tight. We're pretty close to balance. We're right on balance for next year. Going forward, we have, you know, it gets a little bit better, 750,000 moves up to about 80,000. Then in 2017, after all, you know, there, we have that large exodus of teachers going out. You know, we're showing a pretty, pretty healthy operating balance. And then going forward for the next couple of years. I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that Mike English came out, you know, the first time he presented this model, you know, five years out, a lot could happen. I'm not saying that this, you know, this number, I think Mike said that this number was exactly right in five years. He'd, he'd be bringing my money back or something like that. But again, this is, this is the indicator of where we foresee the budget going in the next five years based on the assumptions on the revenue and expenditure side for the school district. Okay? So that's, you know, next year, we're, we're pretty tight, but we're, we're looking good. This doesn't counterface math books at middle school.
Get 400 bucks.
Or $800. I don't know. But it's pretty much on balance. And then going forward, you can see that there are some surpluses there, which, yeah, you find out good stuff. Next thing I want to point out, and one of the things that we've talked about, Dr. Harris and I talked about when we were, one of our meetings on this, we've plugged in some funding. The board recalls, we, we made some transfers for capital into the capital projects fund this year to do, transferred fund downs out of O and M, well, actually it came from the remaining proceeds of Pubble and went into the O and M fund. And then we transferred it to the capital project fund to do the Bauer-Burm work, which if you haven't been down there, it looks great. Well, I think we've worked me down there. So that was a great project. And do some other capital projects in the district. We are, we are plugging in some funds here for movement to the capital projects fund over the coming years. We are close to, we're gonna have our facilities planning meeting here relatively soon to talk about some of the performance contractors work that they've done that the board gave the go-ahead. You go ahead and look at the entire district after the projects at Lowell Franklin and North High School. This amount right here is here for the amount we've, I think Dr. Harris has mentioned the field works, that are our fields that have serviced well. The high schools are now in need of replacement. We've been in discussions with field turf. They're on a national bid contract here with the original turf that went in there for a replacement. So we've got a transfer in for there. And then we have some funds moving out into that capital projects fund over time to, to address some of the needs throughout the district here going forward. This doesn't make our budget deficit, our out of balance, but it doesn't impact our fund balance. And that's, the next thing I want to talk about was our, you know, when you look at our fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, you know, we're right along the 20, you know, right in the range of the fund balance policy that we have here. The, the model does it as expenditures. Our policy does it as a percentage of revenues. But as you, they're, you know, since they're relatively close, we're in pretty good shape there as far as that goes. So those are the things I want to point out. Again, this is the ed operations, trans, I'm rough for cash funds, the operating funds of the school district.
So just to be clear, those numbers and the transfers, that, that's really for the additional sorts of capital work? It's not for our daily O and M or anything like that? This is for those extra projects through perhaps performance contractors?
Performance contracting, you know, we have a huge list of capital needs that we've identified. And so I think it was, in our discussions, Bill and I, we believe it's the right thing to do to start putting those capital projects in our plan. So we can start picking them off. You know, where are our needs? Where's our targets? You know, if the board chooses not to put that in the budget, then that's, you know, a million dollars or 500,000 that goes back into operating. But for planning purposes, if we're gonna make progress on some of those capital projects that we've identified, we have to start building them into the model. And then obviously target those things as we move forward. You know, the one for this coming year is the high school football fields. Those surfaces have to be replaced. I mean, they're at the end of their life. They really are a pressing need. And we have been, you know, working on, on those. We're bringing those forward. Hopefully sometime soon that can be replaced this summer. I mean, that is a critical need that, you know, that we need to do. So that's what the million dollars for next year is sitting there. That would cover the cost of both high schools.
Now, this is again, a chart the board I think is very familiar that illustrates fund balance as well as kind of the low point of the blue line is the low point of the year. When you get into here, you're in warrants, which we were historically, for viewers had to issue tax anticipation warrants. This chart obviously looks pretty good. I'm gonna show you another chart here in a second. But this is the chart that indicates that our fund balances are going to continue to increase. You know, they're gonna stay pretty level for the next few years with the budget, you know, based off the, the report I just showed you before. So for the next few years, we'll, we'll stay pretty level and then it'll start to go up. Again, as far as cash balance, we're, you know, above the line, which is good. So we're, we're not in a position to have to issue any warrants going forward as well. When Mike and I were meeting back a few weeks ago, we were talking about, we were looking back in time a little bit at some of the old models. This is what it looked like back in 2008. And again, we know when we're here, you know, in 2008, what we were looking at and we knew what we had to do. Again, I think, you know, I've mentioned some of the things that happened as we looked at this chart back in 2008. We knew we needed to correct these two lines and quick. And that's what we did. So that's why when you go, you know, this chart again, this looks much better. Good contracts with our bargaining groups, changes to our medical plans, save us money. You know, we're prudent with the expenditures when we had to be and made some, some decisions that were difficult. Obviously the impact of, of some revenue from the state that was long overdue was good. But, you know, I, I think we've, we've turned this around to a point where we're, we're holding our own right now. And in the future, as we start to see some retirements, significant amounts, amounts of retirement, we'll see that fund balance to continue to grow. So what does that mean? One of the things, you know, that ISB puts out their financial profile, this was last year. We're financially recognition by the Illinois State Board of Education for our funding, for our school district, for our finances. Rejecting going forward, you know, we stay there. You know, if this continues out. Obviously that's the plan. I just want to say that. Obviously in prior years, we were struggling. You know, when we were making those cuts and issuing some more cash bonds and some other things, we were still struggling. So obviously, you know, I think we've righted, righted some things here through those tough years. And again, this is the financial profile that will be released here. I think it'll be here in a few weeks. It's also in the AFR. If you read through all the pages of the AFR. That's it. So I know it's a lot of information. Again, just, you know, assumptions that we have in place. We'll continue to monitor some of the things that are going on. We'll update the model. You know, budgets are gonna be going out to departments and out to schools here relatively quickly. We'll start to get a better indicator of where those budgets are going to go. Staff, obviously keep an eye. Dr. Rammers already talking staffing with the levels. So they're, you know, we're working on the staffing levels. As we work to build the budget for this year, we'll obviously try and stay in a balanced situation. And we'll, you know, again, I think we'll wait and see what happens up at the state level. But we're ready to accept that if it comes our way, I guess.
Well, thank you very much. And I do want to have time for board members to ask questions or make comments. But first of all, excellent job in terms of not just this presentation and putting this together, but all that you do and Dr. Harris, that you've done over the last few years to help us navigate from a very difficult situation while the economy was making it not any easier as well as the state. So thank you very, very much for that. As I said, I would like board members to have time to ask questions. But the other thing that occurred to me as I was sitting here listening to it, this is the start of the budget process. And this is all about assumptions. So realizing that, you know, we've had this look at it and maybe we could think of some other things. But I think it would be helpful if board members could express whether they are comfortable with the assumptions that they heard tonight, if there's any that gives them pause. Because I think that's only fair to the administration to let them know if there's something that we're not there's something that we're not in tune with, and whether we're comfortable with how we see this projection going. So just sort of fair warning, as they say at, at auction things, I would like each board member to weigh in on that in order to give staff some assurance that they're moving in the direction that we want them to, so. So with that, any questions, first of all? And I don't know if you had any follow-up comments?
No, I do appreciate that, because, you know, you are right. We built in some assumptions here, both on the revenue side and in the expenditure side, and I wanna make sure all board members are clear about what that means. Now, if we get the information two weeks from now that some of these things change, we'll be bringing it back, and we'll making the changes, and if we have to make adjustments either side, then that's what we'll do before we put together the final budget, you know, that we'll take a look at later this, this year. Yeah, I think, you know, in my three years here, you know, I came in three years ago, and we were in that orange area there on that last slide, and, you know, it was a very challenging time, and, and I just wanna, you know, commend Bill and, and his work on this, and as well as all of the staff across the district, similar to what Faith said with curriculum. This is not, we have not gotten to this point, you know, in the green bar, being in a, in a recognition status by chance. It's not by chance. It's by, it's at this table, by all of you, it's been by decisions in all of our schools, you know, to, to be very prudent on expense side of things, and it's been very, you know, fiscally difficult challenges that we've had to overcome. And so I do want to, you know, make it clear that this, this didn't happen. And, you know, those of us that work on it daily, you know, certainly in Bill's department and so on, you know, we are watching these things like a hawk, and always trying to make good decisions moving forward, and, and working with building principals and staff to help them understand, and, you know, and of all the things that were mentioned here this evening. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that context to it, and we certainly wanna stay in that positive trend. And I do think, you know, the board, one of the key things you did a year ago was establish that fund balance policy. You know, once you got it there, now we need to keep it there. You know, that's, that's a critical piece, and I certainly, that's what the key factor is that gets us into a positive budget cycle. So that was my two cents, and certainly curious if there's any questions or comments.
Was there any sense to that?
That's it.
Has the finance committee seen this, or will they just weigh in?
We, we will use it with the, the finance committee has not seen it. We, this is the first rollout, as we've done in the past with the board here in January, once the CPI is out. It's a good time to get, get it, roll it out to the entire board, and then we'll use this moving forward here as we make decisions, and the finance committee will be a part of that as it's modified tomorrow. Obviously, I'll take the whole board as, as the board.
And as we build the budget, 'cause that's the next step now. This projections now, we'll start to build the budget.
And when you said if things change and you have to make adjustments, the bottom line is it'll always be a balanced budget?
That's my bottom line, unless the board directs me differently. You know, and it has been for three years, and have every intention of keeping it that way.
The, first of all, back in, we made fifteen million dollars worth of cuts three years ago. Started doing that three years ago, before Dr. Harris came here. And realizing that we had to do that in order to move toward a balanced budget was, was the board's objective in order to, to do that. Taking into account the teacher, current teacher contract, which, which they were very much involved in, and seeing similar slides and similar numbers presented to them, you know, they really agreed to work with us to make our district have a balanced budget. And to them, I very would like to thank them for doing that. I know it's been tough on some of them, having families and so on and so forth, not to give in kind of pay increase, but when you look at other districts in the northern Illinois area, in the six county area, who are millions and millions of dollars behind, we are in a very, very good shape with a five-year projection, which we've always had. We've always had five years, ever since PMAs been with us. I don't think it's anything less than it's built in five years. We've always known five years out where, where we were gonna be. I appreciated the historical aspects of this presentation tonight, going back and showing us where, where we were, and how we, and how we corrected that. So thanks for presenting that, because we've done some pretty marvelous and unbelievable things in holding some things at bay, you know, like the new courses and curriculum development and so on. I remember we put a freeze on that, and now we're able to do that and still have a balanced budget, and the projections going forward, you know, appear very good. There, there are some uncertainties out there. I, I'm not so sure we can live our life, you know, sitting back and worrying about all the uncertainties, but you've included some of those uncertainties, at least placeholders for those potential things, and that point five percent has been talked about as a potential way they might roll that shift out to the older communities if they don't do something else about it. And I think we're, we're really in, we're really in very, very fine shape financially. We have been for the last three years, you know, to the credit of the staff, and also the board directing a balanced budget and getting a, a change really in the, in the position where we were, and moving ahead in that different direction. We've done some pretty, pretty tough decisions in order to make all that happen, so thanks for everything you folks have done, and, you know, I'm pleased with that question Rosemary asked, should we agree or do we agree with all of the assumptions? I believe you've got placeholders in there for, for a lot of things, and I think we're in a position to, to get that balanced budget, and I, I do agree with the, with the placeholders and the numbers that, and the assumptions that are out there, both on the expenditure side as well as the revenue side. Could there be some minor tweaking depending on changes? Yeah, absolutely, and there always will be. But I think for now, in what we know and don't know, I think we put some things out there that I think are conservative. They're, they're really things we can obtain, and I'm really excited about moving forward this year and getting a budget that will be balanced for the fourth year in a row, so thanks.
Jim?
I've been on the board now for two years. I'm very much impressed by the work that Bill has done in two years I've been on the board, so I applaud you for your hard work, Bill. And the fact that we've had a balanced budget has been a blessing to me, since I wasn't on the board when the tough cuts had been made four years ago. I look at this as a planning document, and the question was posed by, was, am I comfortable with the assumptions? In response to your question, yes, I'm comfortable with the assumptions. I think they're, they're conservative projections on, on future revenue streams, and conservative projections on projected expenditures. Now, what I wanna do is make a differentiation between what is a planning document and what we are committing to. The only thing we've committed to so far is this year's budget. And if we are going to make adjustments, for example, in future revenue streams, this document will show us where we're gonna have to make similar adjustment on future expenditures. So this is not a commitment of what the revenue will be for the next five years. It's not a commitment as to what the expenditures will be for the next five years, except to the extent that we've got locked in with the collective bargaining and some other existing contracts. What this shows us, and what it should show the public, if we agree that the assumptions for both revenue and expenditures are conservative, and I believe they are, if adjustments are made on either side of the ledger one way, what adjustments will have to be made on the other side of the ledger to maintain a balanced budget. So I'm comfortable that the projections are conservative, and this can be a planning document, but the public should understand this is not a commitment of what we're going to do after this year, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Well, well, so, anyone else? Well, Jim, I, well, I am asking board members, actually. It's the-
No, I think it's a, it's a good working document. Sitting on the finance committee, I look forward to getting the first draft of the budget and look at the details by each operating fund, and on both the expenditure side and the revenue side, devils of the details, so I'm anxious to see those, but I think for tonight's purpose and the exercise, it's a, it's a good placeholder, as everyone said, that, you know, we can work with to start putting together the budgets of this current coming year and then four years, and have a chance to look at those, you know, those detailed line item by line item. So, no, great, great working document. No question.
Let, let me just make sure I understand. So, so in other words, you are comfortable with this, with the assumptions that you heard here tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna continue to look at them, yes, no question, but you and I, being on the committee, we're gonna see more details and, and try to validate those, those assumptions that they're making, and make sure that they are, whether it's conservative or right, you know, just a good testament, but at least you look at each of those line items, and maybe other assumptions may have to be made, positive or negative for that matter, but yeah. So for, for, for the first pass, you've made some assumptions both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. Now, how accurate those are, well, time will tell.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I have a few, I'm comfortable with the assumptions, and, and I understand, though, the assumptions are, and, and, you know, to Jim's point, the assumptions are that we're going to increase revenues over five years, and so that means there will be some sort of a tax increase every year. So that, that, I think, needs to be stated as one of our assumptions. If we accept the assumptions, then we accept that fact. And we accept that we're gonna have a levy, and the levy is going to take in new property growth, as well as, you know, levy at the CPI within the limitations of the tax cap. So I'm very comfortable with that, and I would hope that everyone on this board, you know, is also comfortable with that, because it's, it's one thing to say the projections are good and the plan looks good, and then it's another thing to say, okay, you know, as planned, we are going to levy to, to go out for what we need. So that's just one thing that I feel the need to say, and that has to be stated, because it's a, if those two things go together, you know, and, and what you've got in your, in your plan now is that two point five, if it's not two point five, okay, then it'll be one point six, and if it's one point six on the revenue, it's gonna be one point six on the expenditures. And those things are going to remain adjustable, so it doesn't matter what the number is, as long as the number is the same. That, I mean, I don't think I'm stating anything that anybody, you know, that hasn't been said tonight.
That's a significant assumption on the revenue side, that we levy the amount that we're allowed to levy under the PTAL. You're absolutely correct. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes. And so even though we call this a projection, in my view, it is, this Mr. Vromasified your plan. So we do have a plan. Okay, so, I mean, I, I've been hearing kind of things around that, you know, number one, we don't have a plan, and number two, that we are in bad financial shape, and everything that's been said here tonight seems to indicate otherwise. I did pull from the state's website, and I'd like you to explain these ratings to me. I don't know if you have the details. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I, I look to see what comprises our financial profile and what gets us to that, that green bar. And could you explain some of those things? And I guess there are, what, four different, or five different categories and scores in each?
Sure. I don't, I don't have it right in front of me, but it does, the state does take into account five different factors, expenditures to revenues, days cash on hand, long-term debt, short-term debt, and expenditures to fund downs, is I think the fifth one.
Yeah.
And they're all weighted in different ways and have different levels of importance. The, the debt ones aren't as, as significant or weighted as heavily as maybe the cash on hand or the expenditure revenue ratio and that type of thing. There's a thirty-five percent, you know, weighting on some of them, and some of them are, are less. So they, they take a look at all that data in the AFR once that's turned in, and that, and that it's posted, so that, you know, obviously, if our score is a one to four score ratio, there's four different levels, financial recognition, review, watch, and then warning that are out there. Once you get into that warning range, the state starts to take a closer look, so.
Okay, so for some, sorry, for some future meeting or, you know, when you get the actual data from the state, if you, if you have that, could you kind of give us the, our, what made up that three point five or whatever score? Just give us the individual weightings and, and what those percentages might be, because that would be interesting for me to see as to how they rated us highly, and, you know, and yet we seem to be told constantly that we're in bad shape. So I'm having a little bit of a conflict here that, that the state says we're good, our auditors say we're good, PMA looks at our projections and says we're good, and yet somehow, in, in some people's minds, you know, we're not good. So I, I'd just like to have all the, all the facts so that I can at least understand where we might either need some improvement or, you know, or where we have justification for feeling good about our financial situation.
I think one of the things, we can absolutely, once we get the indication from the state, you believe that, is that on February first? Is that usually when that is that comes out?
Yeah, and if they make it official then, but after we've turned in the data, they, they qualify it or make sure it's accurate, and then they'll-
We can, at the next board meeting, I, I'm not sure if we'll have it by February thirteen, but we certainly can do, you know, a brief report on that, whether it's a oral report or even a superintendent's report, I can do that, and have Bill talk about it. Somehow we can put that on there, board's sole wishes, you know, we certainly can have more discussion, but it, it's really clarifying where our current financial status is. If that's what you're asking, we can certainly do that.
And it doesn't even have to be oral, it could be written. I don't care either way, just to-
Sure. And again, it's submitted as a page in the AFR, which is-
Which is posted on our website. There's a tab at the bottom, financial profile, so anybody in the community can go see it. Our AFR is posted right after it's done, so it's out there to see as well.
Is this report gonna be on the website too?
Yes.
Can we, is it probably out there already?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Michelle.
Tomorrow, okay. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause if we do hear comments about, you know, how, how poorly we're doing, so we can refer to, we can refer to this document on the website as well as have copies of it, you know, distributed as well, so.
And from the one presentation, didn't the gentleman say that you were in our elite group, that there, the majority of the districts are not in that rating? Do you remember that?
I think-
Or are they mostly?
Most of them are in the top two, I would say.
I think, Joanne, what you're referring to, he was talking about, that was when we were talking about the funding for the Jefferson project. That's correct. That was clearly a unique strategy, you know, for bond issue. He wasn't aware of any other district that did not extend a bond debt for more, for twenty, for less than twenty years. And, you know, we're, we're proposing it on that particular project to do only for twelve. So that's significant, and that's what he was trying to point out on that topic. And that's all part of the bigger picture, but it's still, it's, it's a conscious decision of the board on how we're moving forward, you know, in any type of financial decisions. I mean, it's a very fiscally appropriate decision for a large capital project, you know, to do it on a short term and pay as much principal down as you can upfront and minimize the interest, and, and it's, it's clearly a unique thing.
So I just wanted to make sure, Barb, you're comfortable with the assumptions, I take it from that, and also the trajectory that you've seen presented here tonight. Yes, okay. Joanne, I think you're the last person to-
Well, I, you know, I'm always amazed with the numbers and putting them together and having a big sense and balance, and, I mean, 'cause this, a school district with a hundred and almost fifty million dollar budget is like a big corporation, and so to have it make sense and be responsible to the public is huge, and I'm just very impressed with how you handle it and you're going, and I have every confidence that we'll keep it there, and we now, I mean, we are all committed to always having balanced- all committed to always having balanced budgets and whatever it takes.
Thanks, and I'll add my voice to it as well, I'm very comfortable with this, and I have to say I'm particularly pleased to see a potential pension cost shift, you know, accounted for in there, that is something that I never imagined we'd be able to do. And so I, you know, I'm very happy to see that there, and once again, I just can't say enough about your leadership and your abilities to help keep our ship heading in the right direction, so thank you very much. Other than that, I think we are done with our workshop, unless you've got some final questions for us?
No, unless there's any other questions, board, after you do have time to look through this and/or the curriculum information, you know, certainly ask, you know, get back to me and I'll certainly, you know, direct you according to whether it's Bill or Faith or whatever we need to do. This was a lot this evening, it is, like I said, the huge part of what we do, these two items, especially the statutory responsibilities for the board and to set the curriculum and pass the budget. And so, you know, it's a lot of information and we'll certainly keep you updated as things move forward, especially in the financial situation, specifically with the state. That's, the other things we're pretty confident on, the state's the wild card, you know, and it has been for a few years and will continue to be, but I feel pretty, I feel real good about the, you know, judgments we've made here, and we'll certainly adjust it as we get clearer information.
One other thing, just before we get to public comment, we do have a chance to chat coming up on this, this Saturday, is it that, please?
Nine.
Nine, nine to 10:30. So I'm just wondering, I've gotten wind of a few board members who are going to be out of town, so I'm just sort of trying to figure out who's going to be here besides me. Okay, all right, so we've got enough to do it, great, all right, so I'll see you then, all right, great, we've got, we've got a group to do that. Public comments, no public comments?
Wild pros, Mary and...
Joanne.
And you. Thank you. Are there any other announcements, comments? If not, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Moved by Jim Roman, seconded by Joanne, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Didn't think so? Have a good night.